Welcome to the regular meeting of the Danville City Commission for this Monday, October the 22nd. I'd like to call us to order, I believe we're all here except for Commissioner Atkins, and I ask that we be led in a moment of prayer by Commissioner Kevin Cottle.
Thank you. Father of all, we are blessed to be here as a body in complete freedom. I would like you to help us remember during this what can be divisive time that we are all on the same earth and we are all neighbors and we all have the same goals. Let us keep that in mind as we go through this time. We ask tonight that you have us act in a way that is pleasing to you and we thank you for the -- for our servicemen and women overseas protecting our freedoms and for all first responders here locally. It's in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. If you'll stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
...of the United States of America- ...and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commission, you have before you the agenda for the evening. I assume it meets with your approval, so we'll continue on. We're going to move right into the section that we call "Here the Public." This is the public's opportunity to take three minutes at the podium to address any item that's on tonight's agenda. There'll be an opportunity later on to take three minutes on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. So, do we have any takers for "Here the Public"? Seeing none, we'll move right along into Item 1, which is a proclamation for the Alzheimer's Awareness Month. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Terry, thank you, to read. As you can tell, my bullfrog voice is not the most pleasant.
Is there a reason you're not reading it?
Yeah, yes.
Can't you remember who's got it?
Yes.
Whereas the city of Danville acknowledges that Alzheimer's disease, the most common form of dementia, is a progressive and degenerative brain illness which affects a person's ability to think, feel, and function, and is often ultimately fatal. And whereas more than 5 million Americans are now living with Alzheimer's disease and over 227,000 care partners provide unpaid care at home valued at upwards of $3 billion. Whereas Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month is an opportunity to raise awareness about this growing public health concern, its symptoms, and the importance of early detection so that individuals are able to connect with resources and services that offer assistance such as Adult Day programs, family caregiver support programs, and related senior service providers. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is a difficult and expensive disease to manage as it requires greater - let me start over. Alzheimer's disease is a difficult and expensive disease to manage as it requires greater utilization of inpatient hospital care, skilled nursing facility stays, and home health care visits in comparison to individuals without dementia. And whereas the city of Danville supports the efforts of all providers and joins all interested agencies and organizations in honoring those suffering from Alzheimer's disease, those who have passed, and the caregivers. Now therefore, Mayor G. Michael Paris and the city commissioners of the city of Danville on this 22nd day of October 2018 do hereby proclaim November 2018 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and encourage all residents of Danville to become educated, to personally engage in healthy behaviors, promote brain health, and to support those with the disease and their loved ones who care for them.
Thank you. You want to present that?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Lori Berger and I am with Kindred at Home. We are a home healthcare provider, providing care to the community, skilled nursing care, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech therapy. We do like to take pride in providing passionate care for our patients. We are very happy to say that in doing so, we become a part of their families and we get unfortunately not all the time or most of the time, we're pretty much there till the end. And it's not always the most beautiful picture, but I promise you, it's very rewarding to be a part of that process, to be a part of that support for the family. With a disease such as Alzheimer's and dementia, the biggest complication that we find is just what can we do for the families? They're at home, there's not so - it's not a very insured amount of care, it's a lot of private pay, and based on the poverty levels, we see a lot of patients actually have to reside in the home and depend on the use of caregivers. And so, we pride ourselves in being able to just be that extra set of eyes for not only the caregiver but the physician. So, we're very honored to take this. Again, what we do at the end of the day can sometimes be a little bit emotional, sometimes we can laugh, sometimes we can cry, but we love what we do and we take a lot of pride in it. So, we thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that we accept that proclamation into the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Thank you for what you do. Next, we have a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'm going to ask Commissioner Kevin Cottle to read that. Please, sir.
All righty. Proclamation Domestic Violence Awareness Month 2018. Whereas domestic violence in America is intolerable, unacceptable, must be stopped, and deserves considerable public attention, and whereas children who witness domestic violence often grow up believing that physical cruelty in relationships is acceptable behavior, and thus they tend to perpetuate the cycle of violence in society. And whereas many federal, state, and local programs addressing the domestic violence problem have achieved success bringing greater safety to families, and whereas community leaders, police, judges, advocates, healthcare workers, and concerned Americans are working together across America to develop solutions to this serious problem and to implement services that will improve our responses when it occurs. And whereas programs designed to educate men and women about ways they can help prevent domestic violence are being developed across our nation, and whereas numerous law enforcement officials and departments have created specialized domestic violence units that cooperate with community advocates to enhance services for victims and representatives from the faith community frequently provide essential support in areas where there may be no other services available. And whereas anyone can be a victim of domestic violence regardless of age, sex, ethnicity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, or religion, and whereas we must continue to hold domestic abusers accountable, punish them to the full extent of the law, and prevent them from inflicting more abuse. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor G. Michael Paris and the city commissioners of the city of Danville on this 22nd day of October 2018 recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens to participate in events supporting the effort.
Thank you, sir. Hi there.
Hi.
Come join me.
Here you go.
Give me your name, please.
I'm Diane Fleet.
Hi, Ms. Fleet.
Hi, Mayor. Nice to meet you.
Nice to see you.
This is Andrea.
Andrea.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm the Boyle County Outreach Victims Advocate for Greenhouse 17.
Excellent. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for being a part. Thank you for making this awareness for us and all that you do.
Thank you so much.
So, do you want a picture?
I'd love a picture.
Let's go over here and get a picture. I'm going to let you hold that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go wash your hands after you're done. Just a little.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming.
Absolutely.
Do you have anything you want to share with us or you think we'll say?
Yes, please, take.
I can do real briefly. Thank you all so much for having us here today. So, my name is Diane Fleet. I'm the Assistant Director with Greenhouse 17. We're the domestic violence program that serves central Kentucky. You know, our mission really is that families should live in a home that's free of violence. And we think one of the best ways to do that is to talk about it, have conversations about it, whether that's in churches or our workplace and our government and law enforcement and hospitals. It's sort of a community solution. Our preference is really to keep families home in their home communities where they've got support and loved ones to care for them. But we do have a domestic violence shelter and we also in Clark County Lexington's right on that border. And we also use sometimes area hotels if people need to stay in their homes because school and kids are in school. But our goal is really to kind of meet people where they're at. Some people just need counseling and support, some people need protective orders. You've got a great family judge here in Danville, you've got great law enforcement and support. United Way has been terrific with us and we partner with Lattice Project and Andrea's here in Danville. So, it's really important that we connect with this community. We're also starting, I'll do a little plug, our board is doing a subcommittee and we're actually going to be starting in February. So, if anybody's interested in tackling issues of intimate partner violence, we'd love to hear from you and love to have a good working group here in the Danville community. So, thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your coming, appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
I'll move to accept the proclamation Domestic Violence Awareness Month 2018.
Thank you, Commissioner Cyrus, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Discussion?
None, I'll just make the comment as we did before. Both of these proclamations today are sensitive ones and we appreciate the work that you folks do.
Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 3 is the approval of the previous minutes, those minutes of the October 8th meeting minutes. Do here a motion to approve.
I move for approval of the minutes of the October 8th, 2018 meeting as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle, second?
Second.
Commissioner Cyrus, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 4 is the Resolution Number 2018-10-22-01. This is the Kentucky Heritage Council System License Agreement. Ms. Lester?
Yes. This goes along with the Certified Local Government Grant we've been working on. This is Phase 1, so this just gives us permission to - for the mayor to sign the license for that.
Do here a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion?
I just want to see if Ms. Lester might want to just remind us again what it is we're doing, where we're heading with this.
It's where we'll eventually be able to access our surveys of our properties in historic district. And so, we're working with the University of Kentucky and the Heritage Council. And there's no charge for this for us because we're one of the communities that are getting in on the ground floor. So, us in Covington are getting all this for free.
We did this last year, right?
This has been an ongoing project and it'll go into 2000, it'll come up again. We're having to do it piecemeal because we're working with the National Park Service as well. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, chair will call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 5 is the second resolution, second reading, excuse me, of Ordinance Number 1924. This is in regards to the Planning and Zoning Map Amendment. Ms. Peak?
This is the second reading of Ordinance 1924, an ordinance approving the recommendation of the Danville County Planning and Zoning Commission to expand the Historic Preservation Overlay District within the city of Danville by incorporating therein the Montgomery Rhodes House and the Willis Russell Memorial House.
And this is the second reading?
I move for approval of the second reading of Ordinance 1924.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the -
Roll call.
Roll call, excuse me. Sorry.
Commissioner Terry, yes. Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyrus?
Yes.
Mr. Pankey, I think that takes care of you on that. Item 6 is the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My report is brief and it's largely administrative in nature tonight. I want to advise the city commission that our work through the third-party law firm to complete the title search and other necessary preparatory work with regard to purchase of the property located adjoining City Hall is essentially complete. I had the report from the law firm last week. And to be clear as to our process, I think it would be desirable to have a special call of City Commission to give approval almost once again for the purchase of that property. The commission did previously authorize and the signature of the purchase agreement, but this is the actual purchase itself and to be crystal clear, I think it would be desirable that we have a special call meeting to review that document and authorization to proceed with closing on the purchase of the property. And prior to that actually being signed, I think a city commission meeting to authorize that followed by the signing of the documents would be in order. I would propose that we do that depending upon your schedule and availability either Friday, November the 2nd, or possibly early the next week, Monday, November the 5th would be an available date. We're required under the terms of our purchase contract or purchase agreement to close within 60 days of signing that document. So, we need to do it either Friday, November the 2nd, or early the following week. And so, I would ask your commitment or your agreement as to when we could meet in special session to authorize the purchase of that property.
So, you picture this as being daytime meeting, morning?
I do. It's purely an administrative meeting and giving formal approval to that. And ideally, from an administrative point of view, the city commission would authorize the purchase in a public meeting and then shortly following that, we would actually sign the documents.
I'm good either day.
Well, I think Friday the 2nd is the best.
Yep, okay. That works for me.
Works for me. What time?
Possibly in honor of or in recognition that some people may wish to attend even if it's during the day, I would propose we do it at noon on Friday.
Okay.
And so, I'll accept that as agreement and proceed in discussion with our law firm to that effect. The second issue, I would remind the city commission that we do have a holiday, a city holiday coming up, which is Veterans Day, and our agreed-upon procedure is for when any holiday falls on the weekend, which it does in this case on November the 12th, which is a Sunday, city employees take the day following that as a holiday. So, that would mean our normal meeting date would, being that Monday would be postponed until the following day, Tuesday. So, that would mean that we would have our regular meeting on Tuesday, November the 13th at 5:30, and I think that's by our longstanding agreement and on our regular meeting dates. So, that's informational. And I would again remind the city commission of your agreement to meet for a special workshop, special call meeting workshop on Wednesday, November the 14th, excuse me, at 5:30 for the purpose of having a presentation made by our staff with regard to the process other cities are using to consider and approve both murals and their communities as well as possibly art in public places. This would be the beginning point, I think, an informational learning opportunity for the city commission and the public with regard to how other cities are currently handling this process, and it will be the beginning point of us formulating our own processes following this informational meeting.
And just as a reminder, I'm not available that day. However, move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We are now in the section of our meeting called "Here the Public." This is the public's opportunity to address anything that's not on tonight's agenda for three minutes at the podium. Thank you, ladies, for coming.
I'm here.
Thanks.
Mary Beth?
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Touchstone, and I just wanted to talk with you a little bit today about the fact that scientists ask questions, they test solutions, they make mistakes, and they try again. All these activities take place at the Science and Play to Go exhibit at the Boyle County Public Library. They provide opportunities for children to think just like scientists. With 37 scheduled field trips already on the books, we promote, enhance, and extend scientific thinking. Science matters to society. Science literacy empowers individuals and communities to ask questions, think creatively, solve problems, and work toward better quality of life for all. Science matters to the workforce. People who master STEM subjects like and skills are best prepared to seize the opportunities and face the challenges of the 21st century. Science matters to individuals and families. Curiosity is a critical springboard to early learners filled with wonder and for teens and adults who crave intellectual ways to better understand the world. Science and Go to Play, Science and Play to Go on loan from the Kentucky Science Center is a natural extension of the essential role that the Boyle County Public Library plays in our community. I'm hoping that you will stop by the children's library and experience the exhibit for yourself because over 6,500 people have already visited since September. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Impressive. Mr. Klein?
I'm Steve Klein, and I would just like to invite everybody to the Senior Citizen Center, the gathering place, Wednesday from 4:00 to 6:00 for a chili fundraiser. It's $6 a plate, and the proceeds go to cancer awareness. Thank you.
What day? I'm sorry.
Wednesday, the 24th. Let this come in, Wednesday.
24th.
Right.
Thank you.
From 4:00 to what?
4:00 to 6:00. Everybody calm down.
Anyone else? Hi there.
I knew I had something I wanted to share with the community, but I forgot for a moment, but I finally remembered. This Thursday, the 25th of October, at Trinity Episcopal Church from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., our Women of the Church group is having our annual soup salad sandwich luncheon. There'll be dessert choices and choices of, I think, water and tea to drink. You can come and sit and have your lunch there, or you can come and pick up your order to go. Funds raised by the church women this year will be divided between the WELL in Lexington, which is a service for domestic abuse victims in the Lexington Fayette County area, and also the Preservation Fund for Trinity Episcopal Church. So, I'd like to invite the community to come and eat some yummy food and help us with those good causes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move right into Commissioner Comments. Anyone?
I was going to mention that I think some congratulations are in order for Grace Cafe, who was recognized by the Obama Foundation, and I don't think they got any, allotted any money just yet, but I think the fact that they were recognized out of all the nonprofits that are considered. There's a pretty neat video that I saw on Facebook, and I think it's nice that they're getting recognized for their good works.
Jacob, why don't you take a minute and just talk briefly about the, what we just got through at the -
Spirit of Preservation?
Thank you.
Sure. First, thank you for the opportunity to come up here and talk a little about it. I'm Jacob Pankey. I'm the Chair of the Boyle Lamarc Trust. And yesterday, we celebrated our third annual Spirit of Preservation. At this event, we had the guest speaker Eric Rawlings, the staff architect of the Kentucky Heritage Council at Chaplain Hill Bed and Breakfast, which is owned by Holly, or by Jay and Holly Wood of Danville, which is a new Airbnb in this community. And they have done something unique with that historic property that we wanted to highlight, which in some cases intimidates a lot of people, which is the heating and cooling of historic buildings. Anyone that owns an older building knows the first thing that comes to mind is, how am I going to cool this place and how am I going to heat this place in the winter? Jay and Holly took the initiative and worked Wilderness Trace Solar and installed solar paneling, not on the house, but on a parcel of land behind the house that is outside of sight. This jumpstarted the idea of discussing this educational opportunity for Danville and Boyle County as well as surrounding areas to educate the community that if you own a historic home in an area that is either a national register listing itself or in a national or in the historic district, you could potentially get historic tax credit which would offset the cost of this. Now, the upfront investment of such a thing is quite costly, but if you look at it over the course of a longer period of time, say between 6.5 to 7.5 years, you will begin to get your return on investment. Holly and Jay, of course, like to illuminate people as to just an example of how much savings it comes. And they were talking about recently, they received one of their electric bills for their 7,000 square foot home, which was only $12. It's quite shocking to actually think about that.
You interested in that, Ron?
But not just Danville and Boyle County residents attended this. We also had visitors from Lexington as well as Frankfurt that were considered of such this opportunity. Any proceeds that we received or donations go back into the Boyle Lamarc Trust for these other educational opportunities in our area. If you're interested in these types of opportunities for heating and cooling or learning about these, I would recommend contacting Eric Rawlings at the Kentucky Heritage Council. And I think that pretty much covers the roundabout of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'll do a follow-up from Commissioner Comments' last meeting where I mentioned the Bourbon Chase event that we were doing here and appreciated everybody that was being involved at the time. It turned out to be a successful event in my opinion, so I will once again shout out for those folks that were involved, which would be the Heart of Danville Convention Visitors Bureau, Danville Police Department, and the Public Works. And we also had the local ham radio, I think it's called Wilderness Trace Ham. They were doing a great job for us, and the Chamber of Commerce was involved. So, we pulled all the pieces together. I personally was out on the street with a roaming microphone, and the comments I was getting from visitors that came away, come from far away as the state of Washington and New England states was very positive. They liked our little town, they liked what we did, so thank you all for helping.
It's pretty amazing how many people come to that. I mean, from all over. Jennifer, were there people from outside of the country this year?
I was told there was. I didn't talk to anybody. I was for sure in Canada.
Well, it's pretty phenomenal. How many runners? How many runners? 1,200?
4,800.
4,800.
I'm remembering that we once won the Spirit Award. Has that award been decided yet for this last race?
Oh, gosh. I don't think we won.
Apparently, we did win.
I think we officially know that we did win. I think that was a social media contest in the end, and they had free cookies, so I still think our Bourbon Barrel rolling took the prize.
I think we lost the Spirit Award to Chocolate Chip Cookies, but I think we won the most spirited award.
It was a fun night.
Yeah.
Anything else? Seeing none, we'll move right on into the payment of the bills, which you have before you. Chair will entertain a motion at your discretion.
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of $347,610.49.
Thanks, Commissioner Terry. Second. Thank you, sir. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item made is Resolution 2018-10-22-02. This is the Kentucky League of Cities Liability Grant Application Approval. Donna Peake?
This is just a, we would ask that you approve the resolution so we can apply for a liability grant. It's a 50/50 grant, a 50/50 match, so it's up to $6,000, and we can use it for several different items. That hasn't been decided yet what we're going to use it for, but we're asking to apply.
Do we hear a motion?
I'll move to accept Resolution 2018-10-22-02.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Terry? Discussion?
Quick question. The, one of the things it can be used for is sidewalk replacement or repair. Is that, is that being used now for some of those repairs, Earl? Is that totally a different batch of money?
Yeah, but not this current phase. What you're seeing now is not. That's City of Danville general fund dollars.
No.
I appreciate you bringing it up, Commissioner Cottle, because it did remind me, too. There's a nice little picture here with the, for the liability grant program with these safety cones on there, and is this something that could be used, a request I had earlier about putting pedestrian crossing cones out in some of the major intersections? I know where I've traveled and seen them, they've been very effective. It caught my eye, slowed down. I see you're all looking.
I'm trying to remember what, I don't know that I know the exact style cone you're talking about, but we would have to look into it and get back to you. Yeah, and we can do that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what all things are eligible.
Yeah, I doubt they cost much, but whether that money can be in this grant or not is something I think we need to look at as we go forward, especially we have four lanes on Main Street downtown. It's a long hike across.
Any further discussions? Seeing none, Chair called a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item nine is Resolution 2018-10-22-03. This is the Kentucky Infrastructure Grant Application Approval. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. The information you have in front of you is related to the continued funding of the waterline improvements that you see ongoing along Parable Road. The improvements to date have been part of what we consider Part II of our Water System Improvements Funding Package that was assembled with the water plant construction project. The contingency money on that was previously dedicated or planned intended for, the intended use of those contingencies was the Parable Waterline Project, the, without going into engineering spec, too engineering on you. The ultimate objective is to eliminate and replace the existing standpipe on the east side of Parable, as that is undersized and not really effective given today's hydraulic conditions for the west end of the county. And so the contingency money was sent to add capacity to move water both through the industrial park and also west along Parable Road where you only had a single line that worked. This existing phase, this Part I, is about halfway done. What you have under contract is about, probably about 85, 90% done. We, with the remaining contingency money, we will continue to seek permission to install waterline on, to the west, to a potential water tower location. This package you have in front of you funds the balance of the work beyond that waterline contingency money, specifically the connection of the termination of the end of that future waterline to the tower and the construction of the tower, right, at a site to be determined. We do have a couple of ideas on where it would be, but not within 1,000 feet, per se. The resolution through the KIA funding cycle process, the cycle of funding is now for us to meet next year's funding, funding, to becoming a recipient next year, we are seeking the application now. So you'll have a lot of other steps, but this is the initial step in seeking KIA money if that's ultimately the choice you all make, right? So there could be other sources of funds besides these for these. And at this time, KIA has indicated that they have a willingness to give us lower interest loans is what this is attached to. So you're saying yes to a future yes or no, essentially, tonight with this application or with this resolution, if that makes sense. You are telling them that, yes, we will consider that those funds as a source of construction Does that make sense at all?
I have a question. I know this is just an application, but certainly when we apply for something, we're saying that we want to proceed with that. So what do you anticipate the matching fund would be if we were able to get this grant?
This doesn't necessarily require matching funds.
Okay.
The KIA as a source. It's similar. It would be a loan through the state revolving loan program that doesn't require matching funds. It's a little bit like bonding it directly yourself. It's, you're getting the pooled resources of the KIA. They're going to bond a much larger amount, and you would get a portion of that amount as a loan, essentially, is how it functions. Michelle might want to elaborate to provide more details, but I don't necessarily know that a lot are necessary unless you all just have specific questions.
It's not tied to revenue. It's not like a revenue bond.
They will have loan conditions. You're not sure of what those are yet, but ultimately, yeah, you're going to be, you're going to be tying revenue to it.
Yeah, you'll have loan conditions, and you'll also have, with KIA, you have to have a depreciation reserve account that we have to have, and they also charge a fee. So that's the reason we look at it, and it's the reason we don't commit completely to it either, because we'll have to look and see what rate they're giving at that time and see if we can bond it cheaper than what they're actually giving. But it's always good to keep these avenues open and available to us in case we do need them, or if they are cheaper.
So do we hear a motion?
I move we approve Resolution 2018-10-22-03.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cottle, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Motion carries. Item 10 is Resolution 2018-10-22-04. This is the Chemical Bid Award. Mr. Coffey, continue, please.
Thank you again, Mayor Commissioners. The city solicited bids, as we do annually, for chemicals used at both the water plant and the wastewater plant. We've included a memo outlining last year's unit prices and this year's unit prices. This year's version is labeled bid 2018-2019. We have bid, looks like nine, yeah, nine chemicals this year. The actual detailed bid results are also attached. This was an online bidding. It's E-Bridge, and the low vendors for us is for hydrofluoric acid is Univar, sodium permanganate is Chemrite, PAC, polyaluminum chloride is Chemtrade, PAC is Jacobi carbons, cationic polymer is Brentag, caustic sodas Brentag, phosphates Chemrite, Mississippi rotary lime is chemical resources, and also sodium carbonate.
I'll move to accept Resolution number 2018-10-22-04.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Earl?
Sir?
Math-wise, it's about, are we going to pay a whole lot more, about even, because you're up in some, down on some? If you haven't had time to add to calculate.
No, we looked at it a little bit, and I was just wanting to double-check in my head. The cost at the wastewater plant will go up net. The cost of the water plant will be about a wash, but it's generally, is hard to predict because it's going to be dependent on water quality at the lake, so that if you have a poor chemistry year, you're going to use more chemicals.
Got you. Understand.
I have a question as well.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so I thought that was a good question, Mayor. I also noticed that there's two chemicals that we did not purchase last year. You want to elaborate on that a little bit? They're new, they're new in this budget.
That's a choice. We're using phosphate and lime. The choice of lime is adding it to the wastewater plant. Just, it's purely a chemistry thing tied to some of the new water quality requirements. For example, a lower phosphorus number where we used to landfill it, now we have to remove it with chemicals, and so it's an added expense typically.
So I'm getting to another point, too. You had to add two new chemicals, which is probably better for the whole community, and of the six, or actually, yeah, two, so of the other ones that were remaining, it looked as though we had very slight increases on those, about three of them and three of them decreases, so good job. I just wanted the folks listening here tonight to know that it was sort of an even-out until those two new chemicals were added, but certainly that's for the betterment.
Finance coordinates that, and we appreciate their effort on aiding in our process with the chemicals.
Anything further? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Motion carries. Item 11 is Resolution 2018-10-22-05. This is the lease agreement with B. Craft. Mr. Coffey?
The city is co-owner of land at the end of Allen Springs, Cross Pike in Allen Springs. It's an old landfill. The landfill itself has been closed officially. The surface is leased for agricultural purposes as identified in the information given. This lease is with Matt B. Craft. Staff recommends accepting the terms of the lease. You don't really have a lot of other things you can do with the balance of the property that's not used by Mr. B. Craft.
And it's $25 per year?
Yep. Yes, sir.
I would point out that the county has already passed this resolution or this contract. The county judge executive communicated to me on this, and he said the value of the lease wasn't in the money received, but it was a very rough tract, and the contractor basically mows it and saves the county or possibly the city the expense of doing that.
Do we hear a motion?
I move for approval of Resolution 2018-10-22-05.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. So how often do we renew this?
Depends on the term of the contract. I believe this is the second five-year term since my tenure here that it's been...
Okay, so, and we do this because it was a landfill?
Well, it's jointly owned with the county, and the county has taken this action and asked us to also agree with them in the approach of avoiding costs to maintain the land because of the rough condition of that land.
But, yeah, it was the old landfill.
Okay, I got it. Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Motion carries. Item 12 will be Resolution 2018-10-22-06. This is in regards to the fire grant application through Department of Homeland Security. Who wants that? Ken?
Yes, sir. Mayor Commissioners, thank you. This resolution authorized me to submit the application for radios and radio equipment to the amount of $180,647, where our match will be 5% at $9,032.
Sounds like a pretty good deal to me.
I'll take those. Take their return.
Do we hear a motion?
I move for the approval of Resolution 2018-10-22-06.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Discussion?
We kind of let it leak out here. What a good deal, huh? That's, yeah.
We'll take more of those.
I could just add very briefly that the Kentucky League of Cities staff helped the city in completing this grant application. It's a very competitive grant. There's no assurance that we will get it, but if we do, it's a wonderful thing.
Good deal. No other questions? Chair called the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Motion carries. I think that's the end of our formal business. I think we have a reason for executive session, do we not, Commissioner Cottle?
Yes, we do have a need for executive session to deal with personnel matters.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter, or personnel matters pursuant to KRS 618101F.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Motion carries. We are in executive, we are in executive session.
I'm standing. Yes. Do we hear a... We come into regular session?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to come back into regular session. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
I know, I know. They're back.
Sit down.
Yeah, we're talking to you.
Do we have a sergeant-at-arms?
I believe we have, Madam Clerk, you have some...
Yes, we, staff would ask that you hire Braden Copper to the position of police officer with the usual probationary measures.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Motion carries.
Next, we would ask that you hire James Morris to the position of network technician with the usual probationary measures. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Next, we would ask that you move Nick Bowden from the position of Public Works Maintenance Operator to the position of Parking Enforcement Officer with the usual probationary measures.
Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And lastly, we would ask that you hire Rick, or promote Rick Henry to the position of Public Works Director with the usual probationary measures.
Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carries. This is great progress. Thanks for all your hard work. Look forward to continuing to develop our staff here. Anything else?
Nope.
Do you hear a motion? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Have a good evening, everyone. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Have a good evening, everyone.